Hey, good evening. This is the, it is 6 o'clock. This is the March meeting of the Beaver Creek Planning Commission. We'll go ahead and call into work. I want to congratulate Jonathan Meyer on joining us on the Planning Commission, and we'd like to congratulate Mrs. Tiffany Schwartz on her appointment at the City Council. She will be missed. Another thing that I wanted to bring up is we will miss our former city planner Jeff McGrath with a heavy heart that he's no longer with us. So I just wanted to acknowledge him. This is the first meeting we'll have without having him here. So I just wanted to say it will be sorely missed. First point of business, and we need to call the roll.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self is absent. Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here. So we will need a vote to excuse Mr. Self?
Mr. Chair, I move to excuse Mr. Self.
I'll second.
And we'll just do general consensus.
Aye.
And could somebody kick the AC a little bit? It is sweltering in here right now. Next item would be our agenda. Were there any corrections or changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay. Then we will need a vote to approve the agenda as written.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Mr. Chair, second.
And we'll do that also by general consensus.
Aye.
All right, and the last formal thing here is the minutes. Were any corrections or changes to the January meeting? Nothing? All right, then we will need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the February minutes, February 2019, 20 minutes.
Awesome.
I'll move to second.
Great, and we'll do that also by general consensus.
Aye.
All right, tonight we have one public hearing, two decision items, and two subdivisions. So anybody that's here for the public meeting, we will do a presentation by the applicant, then a staff presentation, and then we will take input from the public. The public hearing, we'd like you to come up, say your name, your address, and then try and limit yourself to three minutes. And I guess with that, we'll go ahead and read the first case?
This is case number PC 20-4, for the purpose of reviewing an update to the zoning code.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Before you this evening is the 2020 proposed zoning code update changes. As you all are aware, every year or two, we go through the zoning code and collect any changes that we think need to be made during our day-to-day operations. We run into discrepancies, mistakes, things that we see might need to be addressed that have never been addressed before, and we keep track of those. And then approximately once a year, we bring those changes to you guys to keep that zoning code updated. This list for this year isn't as extensive as some of the ones that you've seen before, but we still felt the need to go ahead and move forward since it had been, it's been about a year and a half since the last one that we did. One of the first changes that we're proposing is to address solar farms. So we do address solar panels in the code currently, but those, that section of the zoning code is primarily targeted towards residential properties and then also commercial properties who are just using solar panels specifically for that property. So at Walmart, for example, Walmart has solar panels all on top of their roof, Walgreens, same thing. They're just using the solar panels to supplement the power on their property. They're not selling the energy back to anyone else or trying to make a profit off of that. So the solar panels that we're addressing, the solar farms that we're addressing in this update is specifically for commercial purposes, you know, for companies to make profit off of the energy that they're producing. The reason that we actually brought this forward is because we did have someone had expressed some interest in putting in a solar farm in the city. And so when we went back and looked at the code, we realized, hey, we don't have anything in our code that actually addresses solar farms, and also, we don't have anything in our Schedule of Permitted Uses that would dictate where we would allow solar farms to go. So aside from adding a definition for solar farms, we also added solar farms into Appendix B of the Schedule of Permitted Uses. And we added it to be conditionally permitted in B4 districts, I1 districts, and I2 districts. So when we allowed it as a conditional use, it means that before they could move forward with operations, they would have to come to the Planning Commission to get approval first. So the Planning Commission would get, would be allowed to review it, put conditions into place on the project before it would be approved. So that would be, so in Appendix B, solar farms are permitted, will be conditionally permitted in B4, I1, and I2. The second change that we made was in the parking requirements for medical, dental, or veterinary office or clinics. So currently in our zoning code, the, for medical office, we require three spaces for every exam room. We decided after working on the Children's Medical Center and SOIN before that, that three spaces per exam room over a certain number seems, it's excessive, because when you have a medical center as large as Children's or as large as SOIN, a lot of those treatment exam rooms aren't being used at the same time. When you have a smaller clinic or medical office, generally you have someone in every exam room at all times. So what we did is we changed the requirement to three spaces for every exam room, but once you reach that 20-room threshold, we reduce the number to one for each exam room, exam or treatment room, to kind of balance out the number of parking spaces so that we don't end up when we have a larger medical center with big expanses of empty parking. The third change that we made was in the zoning permit section of the code, which is 158.173. We added a Section 7, which basically is allowing the engineering department to have review rights to our permits before we release them. So what we normally do now is if we have a zoning permit for a shed or a fence or some sort of structure within a sanitary sewer easement, we send it down to engineering department to make sure that it's okay, and then they will add conditions where they're saying, you know, the fence needs to be elevated, or we don't want the shed within this easement. The only issue is that we don't have anything in our code that allows us to enforce the conditions that the engineering department might put on it. So if someone were to go ahead and put it in that easement anyway, at this time, there really isn't anything that we can do about it as far as the code goes. So we wanted to add that in there, which then allows the engineering department to, allows us to, on behalf of the engineering department, make sure that the conditions that the engineer put into place on our zoning permit are being enforced. And then also allows the engineer to go back in the future if they do allow a shed to be, or a fence to be put in a detention easement or a drainage easement, to allow them to make adjustments to that if necessary. And then a couple of changes that we made in, additional changes in that Schedule of Permitted Uses, indoor shooting ranges, we had, we've had some interest in those, and we added that to B2, B3, and B4, also conditionally permitted. So it would have to come before the Planning Commission for any of those zoning districts before we would allow, before we'd issue new permits. And then finally, plumbing, supply, and contracting shops, we removed that only because we already have a category for contractor services. And when we were looking at them both, when we had that plumbing business that came through Planning Commission last year, the contractor services and the plumbing supply, plumbing contractor services, they were allowed in different zoning districts, and it just, for consistency's sake, it didn't make sense to allow them in some and not the other when they're essentially the same thing. So we removed that, and that all falls under just contractor services. So staff is recommending approval, obviously, of the zoning code changes, and those are outlined in the resolution that was attached in your staff report. And if you have any questions, I can answer them following the public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And since the city is the applicant, we've heard from the applicant and staff, I'll go ahead and start with questions to my right to Mr. Schreider.
No, sir. The presentation was thorough enough that it, oh, public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped a step. So do we have any comment from public, anybody that wants to step up and ask any questions on zoning code? All right, well, that will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll start with Mr. Schreider to my right.
Just a great thing to say, and yeah, you ruined it. So no questions?
No questions. All right. Mr. Height?
No questions.
No questions.
I think I have to do it, just out of tradition. With Mr. Self not being here, I'd be remiss if I didn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask a question. So we'll, I had just two quick questions. On the solar farm, I'm assuming it's, because it's the primary purpose, net metering is still in effect for, so if CVS is generating more electricity than they're currently, they can still sell it back to the grid, but it just can't be the sole purpose.
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, we don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then what was the deletion of the placards for the zoning permit? I saw that in there as well.
Oh, so there's, yeah, there is a, yeah, I didn't address that just because it was very minor. So there's that section of the code which requires, which requires that you post your zoning permit in a, you know, in a spot where it's visible. We've never, we've never done that before. We've never told anyone they needed to do that. It's, no one has ever done it, and so we just decided to just remove it from there anyway. Everything that we do now is electronic anyway, so we have electronic copies of everything. So that is basically requiring that when someone gets a permit, they have to like, put it in their window so that we can see it, and that's, it's just not necessary.
Okay, I thought we were talking about like the little street signs that you guys would put up like on a power pole or something right in front of a construction site, or okay.
Yep.
Perfect. I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Seems pretty cut and dry to me, so I'll go ahead and open up, open up the vote.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 20-4 zoning code updates.
Do I have a second?
I second.
And with that, we'll go ahead and call, call vote?
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. And the four, nothing vote. PC 20-4 passes. The next item is a decision item. It's PUD 519 MOD 8/19 MINOR MOD. Oh, yeah, this was a tabled item. Yes, this was a tabled item from the November meeting, so we'll need a motion to untable.
Mr. Chair, I move to untable PUD 519 MOD 8/19 MINOR MOD.
Second.
And we can do that by general consensus. To untable?
Aye.
So as you all are aware, this case was tabled in November of last year. At the time, the city had some concerns about the kind of overall size and scale of the, of the sign as well as kind of the design of it. Since that time, the applicant has been working with us to come to a compromise on what, what we both would like the sign to look like, and we did get a revision that staff feels is more consistent with the kind of design expectations that we have here in the city of Beaver Creek. Overall, the sign is slightly taller. It is 34 feet as opposed to the 30 feet that it was before. The actual sign, sign faces are smaller. If you looked at the old sign and look at the new one, you can see that the sign panels are smaller, the actual electronic message is smaller. They did lift the sign up a little bit, which staff feels is, is a good thing to have the sign so low to the ground. It felt like it was kind of counterproductive to making it visible off of 35 and North Fairfield. So staff does feel that the sign is more consistent with, with our expectations, and we are recommending approval of the sign with the conditions that we did attach in the, attached to the agenda item. Just one condition that we did want to make note of is the condition for landscaping around the base of the sign. We are requiring that the sign be placed in an actual landscape island, so that we'll have to create an island like you would see in any other parking lot with, you know, curb, and then it will also need to be landscaped. We did not add, we did not require a landscaping bond for this, simply because of the scale of it, the fact that there isn't going to be that much landscaping, but also because our zoning code does have requirements for landscaping around ground signs. So we can still fall back on that to make sure that the landscaping does get addressed. So staff is recommending approval with those conditions in the recommendation, the six conditions. And if you have any questions, I can answer those. Also, the applicant is here as well to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I'll start with Mr. Height to my left.
Quick question for staff.
Do we have a presentation by the applicant?
It's a, it was a minor modification, so it, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Sorry, we're all learning together here.
Sure.
I'm trying to recollect. Was there a smaller sign closer to Chase?
No.
No? Okay, never mind. Then I have no questions.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
I guess my one, my one question would be, does the LED panel dim at all at night? Or is that just a consistent brightness? Because I know along 35, you know, that could be very bright if you have the same brightness in the middle of the day.
Yeah, that is a question that we should ask the applicant, and I think if it's, if it's something that, something that probably could, that we could require if you feel that, you know, having it that bright at night needs to be taken down, so if you want to answer that question.
The sign has automatic dimming capabilities built into it.
Can you state your name for me, sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Jim Omar.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Mr. Schreider, any questions?
Can you just go back a slide so we can see what the old sign for reference? Thank you. So you made, or I guess I do have a question for staff. You made comment that the interior or the bottom portion of this, the new version is smaller?
The actual, the square footage.
Oh, the square, you were talking square footage.
Yeah, the square footage, not the actual, yeah.
So we've actually reduced a lot of the, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
I have no questions. We'll go ahead and put this to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 519 MOD 8-19 MINOR Beaver Valley Shopping Center signage with the attached six conditions.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I second.
And with that, we'll call for a vote.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. The four zero vote, PUD 519 MOD 8/19 MINOR MOD is approved. The last decision item we have for tonight is a community reinvestment area. This is kind of a new thing for us up here, so we'll let Mr. Burkett go ahead and take us through kind of what we're doing here and kind of the purpose of the CRA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the issue we have before you this evening for this agenda item is we're looking to have the Planning Commission appoint one of its members on our Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. What this is, earlier, in the middle of last year, City Council reaffirmed a resolution that was approved in 2018 that created community reinvestment areas in the city. Actually, it designated the entire city as a community reinvestment area. What community reinvestment areas are is an area that is designated for incentives for reinvestment, that we deem that, you know, development wouldn't occur without some help from the city. And what these are is a potential to incentivize future tax revenues from property taxes. So this, I didn't put any numbers in terms of dollar amounts, but if this was like a pre-renovation or pre-construction tax amount, and what we'd be looking is to exempt a portion of the future or post-renovation or construction property taxes. And what that does is even level the playing field. A lot of other cities have these community reinvestment areas, and there's other economic development tools that are within the city's toolbox and other cities' toolboxes for incentivizing this development. Again, the CRA was approved in 2018 and reaffirmed last year, and that resolution established some guidelines, like you can exempt up to 100% of the future tax revenue, so not existing, but whatever that future revenue is, exempt up to 100% of that for up to 12 years for remodeling or renovation of existing structures or existing, you know, commercial industrial structures that need renovation and couldn't, and the pro forma just wouldn't work without that extra incentive from this CRA. And up to 15 years for new construction, so if there's a vacant site and the pro forma wouldn't work without government intervention or government, you know, the CRA assistance, you know, we can exempt that up to 15 years. And by state statute, anything more than a 50% exemption would require a school board, or 50% or higher would require a school board approval. And each one of these would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis based on, you know, the first thing we'd look at is can it work without, you know, any exemptions? But the legislation required a Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council to be created, and on that initial board, it's two members appointed by the mayor, two members appointed by City Council, and then one appointed by Planning Commission. Those five members will then meet and appoint two more members for a total of seven members on the board. And we anticipate the council will review applications and make recommendations to City Council, and then an annual review if there's, after we have a compiled list of, you know, what the CRAs are, annual review to ensure that they are complying with whatever agreements those individual CRAs were establishing. But again, what we're requesting this evening is Planning Commission ask any questions you might have, but then ultimately, you know, have one of the members, either one of you four, or Mr. Self. I know he sent an email, you know, volunteering. He didn't, he didn't want to, he didn't want to act like he wasn't interested just because he couldn't make it this evening, so he was throwing his name in the hat for that. Really, I wouldn't anticipate at first the board meeting that many times. You know, we, obviously, we don't even have the board yet, so I don't have any applications, and you know, this is something that we're not, you know, this is something we're going to roll out in the next year or so, but you know, I wouldn't anticipate the volume being high at first. But again, I'm here to answer any questions about, you know, community reinvestment areas in general, or anything you would have specifically.
Okay. And since this isn't going to be an ordinary yes or no vote, then we would actually need then a motion to elect somebody?
Yeah, I mean, I put a, yeah, I mean, just by general acclamation, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to make nominations, if there's more than one, or if there's, if you discuss and you feel there's one person, then just a simple motion to appoint that individual.
Okay.
And it's a, and just, just for Planning Commission's awareness, it's a three-year appointment, so then after three years, then the Planning Commission would reappoint somebody.
Okay.
Or continue the same person.
Well, I guess I'll open it up to fellow members here. Is there any interest here? We know Mr. Self has expressed interest.
Well, I have one question first. So that three-year appointment, you don't have to stay on City Planning Commission during that appointment?
Yeah, there's, no, I mean.
They're out one.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Does anybody want to throw their ring in, or their hat into the ring right now?
No, I motion to appoint Mr. Mike Self.
I'll second that motion.
And we'll go ahead and take a vote?
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. And motion carries for the nothing. Mr. Self will now also be our representative on the CRA board. Congratulations to Mr. Self. I'm sure he's watching live in Florida right now.
In anticipation.
Yes. The next item that we have on our agenda today is a subdivision, so just a reminder that this is a binding decision at the Planning Commission level, so any decision that we make is binding. With that, it's S-20-2 IH Credit Union and Brookfield Station.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, is an application requesting approval of a final subdivision for 2.794 acres at the southeast corner of Lance and North Fairfield Roads. The IH Credit Union was approved late last year to be in the location of the William Beckenstun's business, which is no longer in operation. This subdivision would combine the six lots that you see, the six parcels that you see on the aerial into two separate parcels. The first Lot 1 would be for the Brookfield Station, and also this, this area here, this, the house and this portion of the building would be demolished, and all of this will be one lot and will be owned by Brookfield Station. And then Lot 2 will be owned by IH Credit Union, which will be the credit union as well as the multi-tenant building that will be attached to it. The plat has a couple of cross-access easements shown as were required with the specific site plan, so it allows access between the two lots, out to Lance Road and also out to North Fairfield Road. We have, we are recommending approval with four conditions. We would like to add one additional condition, just requiring additional documentation that further describes the cross-access easement before we release the record plan, before we sign off on the record plan, just to be consistent with other plats that we've done with cross-access easements. So we are recommending approval with five conditions, and if you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Awesome. I guess with that, Mr. Meyer, did you have any, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Mr. Height?
No questions.
Mr. Schreider?
So can we clarify the fifth recommendation? So you want additional documentation describing...
Additional documentation further describing the cross-access easement shall be required prior to the release of the record plan.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
Any issues with the legalese on that?
No.
Is that, is, okay.
Spur and I discussed that, and I totally 100% agree.
Okay. Can we carry a motion, can we do both at the same time, the recommendation, add the recommendation and do the vote?
I would do a motion, I would do a separate motion to amend the conditions. Trish, that's what we do, and then just vote on it as amended.
I want a motion on the fifth recommendation, please.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add the fifth recommendation, requiring additional documentation describing the, or what shall be required prior to the release of the record plan.
Something along those lines. I'll need a second.
I'm happy to second that.
And I think we can do that by a general consensus as well. Yes?
Yes.
And then we will need a motion to approve the subdivision.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve subdivision S-20-2 with the attached five conditions.
With that, we'll go ahead and call a vote?
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. Motion carries, case number S-20-2. And the last item that we have on our agenda for tonight is a final subdivision. It is S-20-3 Rock Drive Subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of final subdivision for approximately 9.5 acres on the west side of North Fairfield Road, which will accommodate the previously approved Dayton Children's Medical Office Building. So the property currently is 13 separate parcels. Some of them are platted, some are not. In order to combine all of these, we had to do a new subdivision just because of the fact that some were platted and some weren't. So the Children's Medical will actually be located on Lot 4 of the subdivision. The other lots, Lot 3, Lot 2, and Lot 5 will remain vacant at this time. We don't have any, any plans in the pipeline for, for any development on those properties. And then Lot 1 is actually going to be the road, so they created a separate lot so that it makes it easier in the future to go ahead and dedicate Lot 1 to the city, and the funds to actually buy Lot 1 are already in place, so that's moving forward as well. moving forward as well. So that is, so Lot 1 would be the, the extension of Lance Road. And then you have the Rock Drive reconfiguration. So right now, Rock Drive just comes straight through, but it'll curve downwards and then connect up to Lance Road. We received comments from all the agencies, and they all recommended approval or approval with conditions. Staff is also recommending approval with the five conditions in the attached staff report. And if you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Perfect. Thank you.
With that, I'll go ahead and open up questions to any of my fellow commissioners who have any.
So just out of curiosity, down on the bottom left of this, where Lot 1 meets the edge of their, I guess, property line?
Mm-hmm.
How, how does that part work?
So, right, because they don't own that. So right now, it'll, it'll stay as is. And in the future, they will, it will, it'll be extended. So the, we'll acquire right-of-way from, I think Newcomer owns that portion. And then they also own the, own the bottom portion that, that then would connect to the right-of-way that we already own, just to the east of Newcomer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
No questions.
Perfect. With that, we will, we'll need a motion in a second. Want to break in here? Go ahead and give us your, your first motion here.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve S-20-3 with the five attached conditions.
I'll need a second.
I'll second that.
And we'll go ahead and call for a vote.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes. That carries four-zero, case number S-20-3. Before we wrap up for the evening, staff wanted us to make an announcement. There will be a public hearing notice, open house regarding the 2020 Land Use Plan Update. It'll be held on Thursday, March 12, between 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM. It'll be right here in this building, Beaver Creek City Hall, in these chambers. If you have any questions, please reach out 937-427-5512, or planning@beavercreechohio.gov. And with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I believe we can do that by general consensus.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.